PM, Tuesday, August 15th. We'll have the call to order, the invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith, and pledge allegiance followed up by Councilmember Vince Maggio.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Especially thank you for a little bit of cooler weather that we're experiencing today. God, I pray that you will be with us in these council chambers today as we conduct the business of the citizens of Bossier City, Lord. And as we leave here today, that you will protect each and every one of us on our way home. Lord, we thank you for Ms. Emily Ward, who will be recognized today in the talents that you have given her, Lord, and that you will continue to bless her in those talents as she finishes her career at LSU. Lord, I pray that you will be with each and every one of us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me saying the pledge.
(Inaudible) The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, real call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammons.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president pro tem, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting. And counsel, under announcements, the mayor has a presentation that he would like to make at this time.
I'd like to pass Emily Ward up to the floor.
I'm so excited. We talked over a few times. Today she told me, I told her, she said, "Well, I'm not the president anymore." She goes, "Yeah, but this is my hometown." So that means a lot, that she's from hometown, she still remembers hometown. On review of proximity. Whereas Emily Ward represented the city of Bossier City with distinction during the Women's Basketball 2023 NCAA National Championship. A championship that will go down in history as the LSU's first ever basketball championship title. And whereas in 2019, Emily graduated from Benton High School as a decorated athlete. During her high school years, she not only gained basketball skills, but also learned how to dream, work hard, and stay focused. And whereas at the end of high school, Emily received multiple scholarship offers from Division One schools to join their basketball programs. A tough decision to follow. Should she accept one of these opportunities and play basketball on scholarship? Or should she follow her dream to become a part of the LSU basketball program even though no scholarship was offered? She followed her dream and joined the LSU basketball program as preferred welcome and never looked back. And whereas Emily worked hard after two years, earned a scholarship with the LSU program, however, right after earning the scholarship, there was a change of coaches, Kim Mulkey. And with a lot of outstanding talent surrounding her, she once again found herself a new scholarship. She kept focused, kept working hard, and kept dreaming. In her fourth year, earned the scholarship status with the new coach. This same year, her energy and leadership were noticed by her new teammates, and she was voted team captain of the team, who would become national champion. And whereas, here is a true champion. Emily, your story inspires us to follow dreams even when it is tough. And your success reminds us that the victories that follow determination and hard work change your life. Your future is bright, and Bossier City is proud to have you call this community your home. Well done. Now therefore, I, Thomas H. Chandler, mayor of the great city of Bossier City, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 15th, 2023, as Emily Ward Day.
And I think I see in the audience some future Bossier leadership. Do we have? Yeah? You ladies want to stand up and introduce yourselves?
(Inaudible)
My name's Isabel Wilson. I'm from Brooklyn, Texas.
My name's Emily Ellison. I'm from Brooklyn.
Thank you for attending today. Hope you learned something. Mr. Jacobs, you want to speak at this point?
It's my understanding, President Free, that the council wishes now to give an announcement concerning my opinion and the outside independent opinion on the issue of term limits that we've received from Katie Bell. I've discussed this with various members of the council. And I can summarize it in the fact, on August, I guess Friday, August 11th, 2023, I did send a letter to the council advising my advice to the council as to how to proceed. My opinion and Ms. Bell's do not differ greatly. There are a few issues, I think, that we, that we, that don't coincide, but we're up, Ms. Bell and I are pretty much on the same page of this. There is the two problems that are presented with this effort to force an amendment to the charter or to invoke an amendment to the charter by use of referendum. There is a petition process that is outlined in Chapter 21 of the charter that would allow the city council to receive, properly receive, a referendum, or not a referendum, but a petition that's properly certified by the registrar of voters with the requisite number of signatures as required by Section 5.01 of the charter. The problem, the first major problem, and I think there are two major problems. The first major problem is the petition, which has been presented to the city council, which was in fact certified by the registrar of voters, is, in my opinion, improperly certified. Ms. Bell's opinion is improperly certified. In the fact that it does not contain the year of birth of the signatories. Louisiana Revised Statute 18:3 basically says, notwithstanding any other provision of the law, to the contrary, every petition submitted to a registrar of voters for certification shall contain the following information. And if you go to subparagraph 3, it says the signer's ward, precinct, and year of birth. After examining the petition, the year of birth is not present for any of the signatories who affix their signature to this petition. Therefore, the language in 18:3 appears to be mandatory. So my first advice to the city is, we've gotten my opinion, we've gotten Ms. Bell's opinion, and I think it needs, you know, to be presented to the attorney general in an expedited fashion. If the city council so chooses to get the last and final opinion of the attorney general. If in fact the attorney general agrees with me and Ms. Bell, then this petition is dead on arrival. And there is nothing, there is no action that the city council can take because it was not in proper form. The second question, should the petition survive the election code requirements? Is the language that was presented to the signatories in the petition was not required in the required form of an ordinance. In order to amend the charter pursuant to Section 21 through the petition process and referendum, the language presented to the voters has to be presented in the form of an ordinance. I feel that the language prepared was lacking. Ms. Bell feels that. But we don't even reach that issue until such a time as we can solve the very first issue, 18:3. You have two ways to amend the charter. You have the petition and referendum, and then you have the city council action if the city council so desires. If the city council were to prepare their own ordinance, then that would have to be subject to the charter commission process that's outlined in Chapter 1. The referendum or the petition process is not subject to the charter commission. But the problem becomes that if it survives the election code language, then 5.01 specifically says the language has to be presented to the voters without alteration. And so therefore, I don't think, and I advise the council, that the language cannot be altered. But before we even get to that, the most pressing question that needs to be answered and needs, and again, I've given my opinion, Ms. Bell's given her opinion, is this election code problem. Because if the petition does not survive the election code problem, then it's annulity. And a week from now, a year from now, 12 years from now, somebody, you know, after serving three terms can challenge, you know, the term limit provision, the proposed term limit provision, if in fact it reached the city council through an improper process. So my advice today, and speaking of this, in Ms. Bell's opinion, and it is in, would be to ask the city council, if they're so inclined, to pass a resolution asking for the attorney general's opinion in an expedited form as quickly as possible. And we've been in contact with the attorney general's office, not on the specific opinion, but on the expedited process. Present that to the attorney general, request an expedited opinion, get an answer to that question, and then decide how the council wishes to move forward.
Counsel, I maintain a motion to approve the minutes of August 1st, 2023, regular council meeting in suspense with the reading.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. All right, counsel, I had a request for an addition. Be New Business Number 16, adopt a resolution authorizing the Bossier City Council to request an opinion from Louisiana Attorney General regarding the validity of the petition delivered on July 10th, 2023 by the Bossier Term Limits Coalition, first and final reading. And this item is requested to be added on following receipt of attorney recommendations and time sensitivity.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do. My mind is not playing tricks on me. I believe when we first started this whole ordeal, that was my motion, I believe, when we started all this, was to have an attorney general look at opinion on this from the very beginning before it was decided to go to an outside counsel. Where do we stand on that from, I think it was two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Well, the resolution before, is that question addressed to me?
Whoever wants to answer it.
Yes, sir.
Well, the, again, I gave my opinion, Ms. Bell's given her opinion. And the resolution before the council is to request an opinion, an expedited opinion, on this matter and this matter only. And again, I understand the mayor's in favor of term limits. You're in favor of term limits, Mr. Hammons. Mr. Smith has made known he's in favor of term limits. But if we do not act properly and solve this issue, then we're not going to get term limits. We are going to get litigation. And that's what I think, that would be my advice for both the mayor and the council, we need to avoid. And so this is not an opinion on the entire scope of the term limits, but it is an opinion of, as does the petition, that has been presented to the council, was it properly certified due to the lack of year of birth information of the signatories?
I got one more. I agree with all of that. I don't think the question comes into who is for term limits and who is against it. I guess the point that I'm trying to make, if three weeks ago, my motion to send this to the attorney general from the get-go, instead of wasting taxpayers' money on an outside attorney, then we would already have the attorney general's opinion. And I mean, I don't know what this outside attorney cost. I still haven't seen a bill on it. That's the point that I'm trying to make, that we should have gone to the attorney general. That is what he is here for in the state of Louisiana, is for stuff just like this, for public entities. They have a whole department for that. So that is my point. I'm going to vote for this so we can go ahead and get it to the attorney general. That's all I have to say on it.
Mr. Jacobs, if I could.
Yes.
Excuse me. For?
Yes.
I believe the question was what actually was faulting in the petition. And I think for clarity, that we wanted outside counsel to specifically define what they perceived as the fault, or faults and/or faults, in the petition. And to go to the attorney general to get an expedited opinion, you need very defined parameters, am I correct? So that they can say yea or nay to the questions that you have as to fault in the petition. That's what I've gathered through this process, and I believe that's why we went to outside counsel. Is that correct?
Well, it certainly helps to narrow down the issues you wish the attorney general to address. If you're trying to get it in expedited form, the least number of questions or issues, you know, presented to the attorney general, the quicker you would think that the attorney general's office could render such an opinion.
In the past, when we have gone to the attorney general, what normally happens is they come back, and it could be weeks later. Well, exactly where do you find fault? You can't ask them to examine the whole petition, asking them where the fault lies. I mean, that's, as far as our past, they want you to define as to what you think is right or wrong.
The guidelines from the attorney general's office, they want the issues presented to them or the questions presented to them in the most narrow form possible to answer your questions.
Thank you.
I've got one follow-up question, Mr. President.
Yes.
But could we have just sent that in with your opinion as you being the paid attorney for the city of Bossier?
Certainly could have, but again, with the number of issues that were presented, the potential problems, I guess I should say, or the vices or faults, then we would probably, in all likelihood, be, still be waiting on the attorney general to render such an opinion.
We, at the time, did not have the defined parameters that we ended up with outside counsel. That is a fair assessment.
I would agree.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? All right, counsel, I have a first and a second. We need to cast our vote.
Mr. President, if I may, could I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I would say that attached to the resolution is the outside opinion and also the opinion letter that I have sent to the council. So it is now publicly available.
Motion carries to add that item.
All right, I need a amendment to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Mr. President, I got a, I'd like to make, since we have a, since we're going to get an attorney general's opinion, there's no reason to have Number 6 and Number 11 on there to vote on. So I'd like to make a motion, we delete Six, Number 6, and Number 11. Then we can come back.
We need to rescind our, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
I rescind.
I rescind.
Depending on the attorney general's opinion, the mayor can add him back on at a later date.
Number 6 and Number 11, and I've got Mr. Williams and Mr. Darby.
All right. So I need a first and a second to amend the agenda now?
You have to do the deletion first. You have to vote.
Vote on the deletion.
Yes, sir.
We have the first and second for that.
I have a first and second for the deletion.
All right, is there any private comment on that, those deletions from the agenda? Any additional comments from the council?
I'll just make a quick comment, since I won't be able to later. You know, and I kind of, I kind of came prepared today to kind of give my take on why I think this is good policy and had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Bell and Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Ray. And, you know, my mind, my mind is kind of altered because today's vote and today's action wasn't necessarily about term limits. It was actually much more than that. Today's potential action in Number 6 and 11 was telling the voters of Bossier who signed a petition that, you know, we hear you and we're taking you up. And I think, in my humble opinion, we can get outside opinions from different attorneys. We can get attorney general's opinions, you know. We can, we can get opinions and we can just continue to kick the can, or we can just take action. And so I would like to see the council just take action. You know, there's two ways that a charter can be amended. And I think that, you know, Abraham Lincoln once said that this was a nation of the people, by the people, and for the people. And I don't know that our founding fathers, when they went on this experiment of America, that they, that they expected the very complex laws that we have now. And, you know, laws are needed for sure. It maintains law and order and makes sure that there's a proper way. But I don't think the ideal was for the layman to have to navigate complex code to help make change and let their voice be heard. And I think that we need to remember that, you know, the principles that our country was founded on. And maybe there's flaws with the petition. Maybe there is a fatal flaw in the petition. I guess we won't know for a couple of weeks. But after we get that opinion, then what? You know, then what's next? And so I think that, I think that, you know, we would be doing the citizens a great service by saying, you know, we hear you, there may have been mistakes in what was presented to us. You know, so we will pick up the baton and we will do it, we will do it the alternate way and at least give them the vote. Look, I'm a pretty sensible guy. I'm not here to cause controversy. I'm here to just do what I think is right. And, you know, I will admit that all 65,000 people that live in Bossier City, not all of them agree with this policy. I think a vast majority do, and I do think it's good policy. But the 3,000, at least, they weren't trying to make the minds up for all 65,000. They just were asking for a chance to let the voters decide on it. And I think that is the important thing that we need to remember, is that the voters deserve to at least have their vote cast and their voice heard on this matter. So I hope that we will not, you know, because it's been a month and a half. We've talked about this ad nauseam, and I would like us to at least just move forward and kind of put this behind us and get to a resolution. Because I don't think the petitioners care if we have to pick up the ball and do it the alternate way as long as they get their voice heard. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Any additional comments?
I have.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, I wanted to let you know that in a conversation, Mr. Darby had asked me to reach out regarding the issue of charter commissions and so forth. We've done that in the past. It appears as though things could have been done differently. So I reached out to Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Bell to ensure going forward that we do this by the book. Since we're doing this by the book, we want to make sure that the charter commission, am I correct, Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Darby, that it's done by the book. We, to your point, you hear the people, it is their right to have this referendum put forth and voted on. That's what America and democracy is all about. But we want to ensure, to Mr. Jacobs' point, that this is done correctly and it cannot be challenged in the future. You spoke of a rule of law in America. Unfortunately, we're governed by a lot of lawyers. And a lot of business people might find fault in how many we have. I see my cousin, no, he's already left, Judge Stinson, but, I mean, we all laugh about that. But it, you know, we are in the position we are today that, you know, courts and laws and judges and lawyers, it's just the nature of the beast, so to speak. So I want to make sure, and I'm sure everybody on this council, including the mayor, ensure that this is done properly and again, by the book. And I think that you will see something coming, hopefully, at the next council meeting that we can assimilate and devise a plan that is impenetrable when it comes to potential litigation.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I look forward to working with you on that.
Additional comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
No ceremonial matters that need to come up?
Approve the agenda. Sorry.
Yeah?
Need to approve the agenda.
No. Approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Maggio. Good to see you, sir.
Jumped right out there.
Comments from the audience? Comments from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. There are no ceremonial matters of recognition of guest on the agenda.
Okay.
Bids, witness opening and seal bids for P23-11 Bardot's rehabilitation.
Did you ask if there were comments from the, from the audience? I got up soon as you said that.
Several times, yeah.
I got up soon as she said it the last time, just a minute ago. I got up soon as you said it.
On the approval of the agenda as amended?
On the time limits, yes.
Okay. Name and address, please.
David Johnson, 4600 blocks, General Yule. I just want to address the council. I know 2,977 people, in what I feel is goodwill, signed a petition. Some people worked very hard on that.
This is specific to the amended agenda?
Yes. And I want to talk to, I want to talk to you about the fact that we're overlooking 2,977 people. I under, I'd like a copy of the charter as written so I can seek counsel and we can make sure that it never happens again and we come back. And we're going to come back. We will have everything dotted and crossed. Chris, if you could get that for me? If you could get that for me, I would much appreciate it.
Speak to me, sir. We'll get that for you.
Very good.
All right.
I just, I just want the people that, that did camp, campaign on this and, and the folks that signed this petition to know that, that they are, their, their, their signature was appreciated and they were counted and we will keep moving forward.
Good.
Mr. Frank.
Thank you.
The charter is available on the website under city laws.
All right. All right. Bids, please.
Witness opening and seal bids for P-23-11 Bardo Sewer Rehabilitation.
Good afternoon, council, Mayor Chandler. The bids today are for the dark, uh, Bardo Sewer Rehab Project. There was one addendum that modified and clarified the documents and included the pre-bid attendees. The engineer's estimate is $442,825. The first bid is from David Lawler Construction for $624,405. They do have their bid bond and they did acknowledge the addendum. The next bid is from Pulley Construction. They do have their bid bond, they did acknowledge the addendum, and their bid is for $587,700. I ask that you acknowledge the reading of these bids.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience?
Mr. Raschenbach, is this the project where they have the giant hole in the road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So there's multiple problems with that sewer main, not just that particular location at that address, there's about five homes that are having problems. Probably been about five years ago, we did a project just to the west of there, along north side and, and back towards Benton Road. This is in similar condition. It's a very difficult location to dig, high water tables, deep, pipes in bad condition, et cetera. So our intent was to do a project very similar to what we did just west of there and put together a set of documents for that. When we did an emergency bid, we got anywhere between 300 and 600,000 dollars on that. These are certainly closer, based on the documents that we've got. Believe it's a little bit more money than what we have appropriated for that. I'll need to just look over these bids and then come back before the council. I, I believe strongly this needs to be done and done properly, so that we don't have continuing issues out there.
I, I would agree, if anyone's driven out there, it's, it's, it, it's a mess and it definitely needs to be taken care of as quickly as possible, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, please cast your votes.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for drainage improvements along Scott Street for a total of $50,000 to come from Fund 496, the 2016 sales tax bond fund. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Hammond and Maggio. Pick one. Questions from the audience on this item? Any additional comments from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve change order number one for the 2023 on-demand concrete project with an increase of $140,000 for a total contract price of $786,450. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the 2023 water fund budget, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating $30,000 from the Arena Capital Fund to purchase and install parking gates at the Brookshire Grocery Arena and cover all project costs, final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
The peppermint threw me off. Motion carries. Public hearing concerning the city's application to the Edward Bryan Memorial JAG program? Ask you?
Evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what this is, we apply for a federal grant every year. Uh, we split it with the sheriff's department, 50-50, we'll receive half, they receive half. A part of the criteria is, is that we do ask for a resolution, public hearing, and then submit that back to them stating that we've done so before they award the grant. That's what it's here for. We'll use the funds, we get it every year, we've done it for, I want to say, right at 17 years. It funds extra patrols towards the end of the year, whenever we get into Christmas season. One of the things that it does is the Armory Task Force, we've done that every year, and it'll fund all the overtime for stuff like that, so. Any questions?
Any questions from the audience? Or the council? All right, we close the public hearing.
Thank you, chief. New business, adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use for the sale of high and low content alcohol for off-premise consumption at a neighborhood discount store, Family Dollar, located at 2226 East Texas Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
Is this something that we would want to look at all four at one time, since they all? Excuse me? Is that in order for us or not?
I mean, if you want to combine all four of these into one reading?
In that way, they can all speak at the same time, because essentially, it's four Family Dollar stores, so. I would make the motion that we combine all four and that each person can speak to any of the four.
I'll second. First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience, I'm combining these four? Any questions from the council? All right.
Okay.
Cast your vote.
Do we have to amend the? No, we're good.
I need, I'm still waiting on the vote from Mr. Williams.
Sorry.
Sorry, thank you. Motion carries. So adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for off-premise consumption in a neighborhood discount store, Family Dollar, located at 2226 East Texas Street, 4100 Barksdale Boulevard, 5350 East Texas Street, and 52, 5362 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience on this, these items? Question from the council? Can you say anything, Caroline? Yes.
Yes, I will state that the MPC saw fit to limit the amount of space, gross space that the alcohol sales could take place. It's one and a half percent at a couple of locations. Also will state that the alcohol request is for beer, that will be along the lines of 5%. There will be no liquor sales. There will be some wine sales upwards of 12%, and there won't be any singles sold at these locations. So they did make those conditions for a, a couple of the locations.
Well, if you, if you remember the one down, it was my district, past Cassio's down at the dollar store, it wasn't a Family Dollar. You know, they, I think they wanted wine and maybe not hard liquor. But we come to a, a agreement, you know, as far as space, so we just have it on the shelves, nothing on the floor, things like that, is that the?
It, it will be similar and they can't exceed the, the one and a half percent of gross sales space, so it will be similar. So as they depicted on different site plans, they will have them on end caps, some will be in coolers and some will be on end caps, but they can't exceed that gross space. And that's all I have.
It's no single, so it's the same as going to Walmart or CVS and picking up a case of beer and taking it home and?
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to repeal ordinance 76 of 2019, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Refresh my memory what that was.
This is the hiring ordinance where the council had put in, in budgetary controls to make sure that, that the administration and the departments weren't going over their allotted budgets, and that's where they were bringing the resolutions to you each time. And so this, the mayor is asking to repeal that ordinance completely. You had already repealed a portion of it for fire and police.
Yeah. I think we need to add the fire and police back in there. We don't want two departments, you know, to not abide by it. I think we need all departments to abide, to abide by it.
Well, this is the mayor's ordinance to repeal it altogether. This, the mayor had requested this ordinance to repeal that altogether, where no one will have to ask for any permission to hire anybody.
So the process would be that we vote on this, we vote, if it votes down, then that piece is still there and then we would come back with a new ordinance reinstating the budgetary control for fire and police, is that correct?
Yes, sir, if that's your pleasure, yes, sir.
Just so that everybody's clear. Counsel.
Mr. President, I will say that we have a ordinance further down on the agenda that will offer the council oversight as it relates to the employee action reports. You know, I have, I have, I took a, a red line stance on this issue several weeks ago when the mayor first brought it up. However, with, with an additional oversight in the ordinance that's later on in the agenda, I could be persuaded to, to support this, since, you know, there will be a monthly report provided allowing, showing us changes in pay and, and, and changes in employment that we haven't always been privy to, to receive from the administration in the past.
I would.
I'm, I'm done, yes, sir.
If, as we go back in, in time to 2009, there was a reason that this ordinance was put in place as a budgetary control item. We heard the same pleas that, you know, allow us to hire and so forth. And whatever happens, it, it just starts growing. And before you know it, it's grown into a deficit that you can't handle. Once they hire and once they do this, the only control that you have the next year is through the budget. And if it grows to that point, because you can't undo, even though you get this report, all they're doing is telling you what we did, and if a mistake's made or you overspent money that you don't have, revenues went down, then it's done. You cannot reverse it, just because you have a report. And, and I'm not, I'm just saying this as an experience. From, you know, historically, it becomes an issue and, and you can't address it for potentially over a year, you know, until the next budget is adopted. At that point, it has grown into a monster. And this isn't saying anything against the mayor or anything against its administration, we have witnessed this. It, it just, whatever happens, it happens. And with this budgetary control of getting approval for promotions, for new hires, we are able to look, at that point in time, can we afford it? Does it make sense? It, it, it's not, and in the 12 years that it's been in place, it has never been an impedance to public safety, it has not been an impedance to hire. If, if in fact, it is that desperate that someone is needed, I believe there's four councilmen that'll be here in a moment's notice to call a special meeting and get that done. And I, I, I plead with my fellow councilmen to understand that this is a, a unique budgetary control, it serves a unique purpose to make sure that we don't end up in deficit spending. And, and the reason I say that is, remember, it may be easy to eliminate municipal employees, which really eliminating anybody's not easy, believe me, we sat here and, and witnessed it. But then you've got civil service, that's a whole different animal in the two itself. So I would ask that the council consider voting this down and reinstating the budgetary controls for all employees. Thank you.
Additional comments?
Basically saying that I can't do my job.
No, sir.
No, wait, no, I'm, I'm saying something, okay, right now? All right, the people elected me to be the mayor. I need, I need to run the city. And if I don't run the city in the right, I mean, every month, Angela comes up here and tells y'all what, how the money is, and the month's, money's always right. And if I start doing wrong, that, that's when y'all gonna start griping or something like that. But I, I haven't had the chance to see how, you know, what I can do. All right? Now Angela comes up here every month and she goes to talk about, you know, the money, and that tells you what, how we are. And I'm not going to, uh... Excuse me? And I, I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna spend over money over budget. If it's under budget, I should be able to hire people without having to get, you know, Mother May out.
Doesn't hurt to have some oversight, though.
I know, but I, what, like, y'all don't trust me or something, or what?
We've, we've done it for, we trusted the last.
That was not me, sir. That was back years ago.
We, we trusted the last.
That was not me. That was not me, sir.
All right, any additional comments?
You know, the, the whole reason that we removed the restrictions on the fire and police is we had both chiefs who we, you know, we entrust in running both of those departments, especially Chief Halgen, that the timeframe that it takes to get a policeman hired and the amount of fire and police that we're coming upon that are retiring, a lot of them are on the drop, everything like that, you know, when they throw out that, hey, they'll give a civil service test, then they have to jump through, I mean, all kind of hoops in order to get the people interviewed, all the tests, everything to become a policeman and also a fireman. I, I would, I would just speak that I'm, that I'm totally against taking that away from, from those two. I think in Bossier City, that is one thing that we have that is un, nobody can compete with, is our fire and police protection. Without that, we, we don't have anything.
Mr. President, for the last 12 years, it's worked, that's why we have the public safety we do.
All right. Additional comments? Cast your vote.
Motion just defeated. Introduce an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-three general fund engineering budget by twenty thousand dollars, increasing expenditures for demolitions in the property standards division. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience on this agenda item? Any questions from the council? Cast your vote.
That's a for, not a against.
You're a for on that item, Mr. Darby? Introduce an ordinance appropriating one hundred and seventy-five thousand to cover project costs for lighting improvements at the city municipal complex in reference to the Louisiana Public Service Commission's Public Entity Energy Efficiency Grant. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, is this just a match for the grant? Is that what this money is for?
Good afternoon, council, mayor. This money is to front load it. So it's a reimbursement grant. And I believe they're gonna give us, I wanna say it was one oh six. It's in the wording of the ordinance. And then there's some additional money that we wanna use to go ahead and do everything all at once for this particular project. And then once the project is done, Public Service Commission come do a walkthrough. Once they're good with everything, they'll cut a check back.
Is this the lights in the parking lot?
Parking lot and the fire admin, the fire department admin portion of their building.
Patrick, that's the money I got from Foster Campbell for the city?
Yes, that did come, that did come from Foster Campbell's office for Public Service Commission. Yes, sir.
We gonna do the whole city hall and parking lot?
This is just the parking lot in the fire admin building. They, they had some money left over for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And then once that project is done, we can reapply again for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four to try to get that municipal complex.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
For the record, Mr. Campbell's office with the Public Service Commission has been very generous through the years in obtaining, I wanna say over a million dollars or more to help us out with updating our lighting. So we, we thank him and his office.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right. Any additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond?
Nothing popped up. I'm for.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating the sum of four million dollars from the twenty eighteen LCDA bond fund to provide a new Bossier City Senior Center. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Smith. Any questions from the audience?
Good afternoon, council and mayor. Tamara Crane, Bossier Council on Aging. On first, I do wish, thank you all on behalf of our board, the staff that work in this facility, and ultimately the seniors of Bossier City and the whole parish, as this building is actually the hub that help us serve over four thousand seniors and their caregivers. Thank y'all for finally doing this. Back in twenty eighteen, if my memory serves me correctly, this bond, we had originally looked at about six to eight million. And of course, other things kinda took precedence. So finally truly getting to see this allocation to get the wheels going on this bus and this center, we truly appreciate it. I do know that we are still looking for possibly some police jury money to help. And also the mayor's office is doing some capital outlay request, a legislation that later on in this fall. Our board and my staff are very committed to, as I have been presented at the committee meetings. We, my staff will tell you I'm cheap, but I'm always trying to save money for things like this. We have about a million dollars of our money, cause we know wherever we get, we're probably gonna have to, you have some equipment, this kinda stuff. So we come to the table also vested in this and the best way that we can serve our seniors. I know that we are still looking at data and some needs list from us, ideally the parking and how much space we truly need to serve our seniors. So I am gathering that and we'll be presenting that within the committee meeting. So again, just wanna thank y'all so much for finally, let's just get this going and everything. And I'm open for any questions if need be.
Any questions, council?
Yeah, I do. And, but, but before I start, let me, let me just say I am one hundred percent for getting a new council on aging. The questions that I have, being in the construction business, we're, we're, we're coming up with a four million dollar budget here. I've seen no plans on what this building is gonna be. We don't know where the building is gonna go. I'm just kind of wondering where we're coming up with this four million dollar number.
We, we did have a drawing, Mike McSwain drew it. It was above what we wanted to spend. And also we, the police jury was trying to get, the other four million dollars was, I think.
Well, they, they told me, they told me they had.
Not doing an accent, Charles, but he kinda blew that for us, but they can't, they can't give us four million dollars. Is that correct, Charles? Basically?
Well, the.
It is lost, though.
Yes and no. There is, the, as I understand it, the money is to be committed or appropriated from the else, two thousand eighteen LCDA bond. And the language of that bond calls into question whether you can have, it talks about city-owned improvements, structures, capital improvements, things of that nature. And so it calls into question as to whether, if the police jury or anybody else is gonna contribute money, is this building gonna be co-owned and in division? And it's possible that the bond language would have to be amended to allow that. If, if you're gonna have four million dollars for a, a project with a matching four million dollars, then the ownership of that building would necessarily, I would assume, be co-owned and in division between the city and the police jury. And the language of the bond, the original bond calls that into question. But, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I know we, we have spoken about, you know, the, the numbers that the, that the center serves being in the city limits and those being out in the parish. And I think those out in the parish far outweigh, if I'm, if I'm correct, what is served in the city.
So Bossier City, for a lot of our stuff, is our highest concentration of numbers. If you look at other municipalities, obviously Bossier City does more than Benton, Bossier City does more than Houghton. If you take everything outside of Bossier City and add it up, Bossier City's still slightly ahead with some services. Some things is not.
I, I would just like, I mean, if for some reason we didn't get any money from, from the parish on this and this was one hundred percent on the city, I, I just want us to make sure that this project, I know you have a million dollars and we're hoping for some, we're hoping for some more money. We always hope for capital outlay money, but it just seems like we don't get any. I just want to make sure that this project can be done and stay in budget is the main thing. But that wasn't addressed to you.
Yes, sir, I do understand. And I do know that's one of the things that at the committee, we did discuss, Mr. Darby, we had that meeting this last Friday and it came up at that as well. And as I have been told, is the first choice of land that we are looking at is the city-owned land right outside here. And that is where we are looking at how that space would work with a layout and parking and everything. There was another option presented by Tinsley Park. So I know those are the two options on the table that have been presented at the committee meeting.
Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. Just to clear up for Councilman Hammond, we asked for the administration to send a letter to the police jury asking for their, for an allocation. And the administration asked that we go ahead and appropriate our share before we ask the, the parish. And so that's, that's simply what this is, is just saying, look, we have four million dollars that we'll bring to the table. You know, what can we expect from the parish and the state? And ideally, the building's not gonna cost that much. We're not gonna need all of this. One can pray and dream. But I will say I would like to thank Councilman Darby for the initiative. You know, someone, someone wise once told me that when you get on the council, you're gonna find little projects that you wanna work on. And somehow I found myself on the council on aging project from day one with Councilman Darby and Councilman Williams. And so it's two years of doing some due diligence and research and to get to the committee meetings and kinda get here. So I'm very excited to support this. I hope that our colleagues at the parish level will see it, that, you know, this facility serves their constituents as well. Their police jurors that represent parts of the city and their constituents use this as well. So that should not be forgotten on them. And then I'm also hopeful that we will be able to get money from the state. And I know our city engineering office and Mr. Roshanbok are gonna make this come in way under budget. So I've got all the faith in the world that that's gonna happen. So, thank you.
Any additional comments?
Yeah, I, I think that, that is all fantastic. But I think the first step that we need to do, we may not need all this four million dollars, that we need to have a set of plans. We need to sit down. Mr. Roshanbok needs to price them out, not price them out completely because, but we need to get some kind of set budget. When y'all price this out, I don't know how long ago, material and material constraints have changed drastically. So I think that's where we need to start before we go starting out, you know, we're asking for capital outlay money. We don't even know how much we need to ask for. So I think we need to, I think that, that's always your first step in anything that you build. You've gotta have a plan. We need a plan. We need to, to get a budget and go from there.
We have a plan.
We have a plan.
We just need a smaller plan now, cause that would come in at seven point two.
Y'all have a plan. I don't have a plan.
The, the committee.
Let me break it down that way.
The committee's still working on the plan.
Okay, so we don't have a plan?
No, we have a plan.
Okay.
We, yeah, we have something, the committee has something drawn up. Now, we don't think it's the plan that we wanna go with, but we have a ballpark figure of where we're gonna be at from, from an architect.
All right. We wanna appropriate this money so nobody else can get it. That's one reason too.
Can I, Mr. President, can I ask of the city attorney, what about the cyber innovation center? That's co-owned by the parish and the city. And we used bond money for that. Is it different language in the two bonds? I was asked to look at the language in the two thousand and seven bond. And I have just, to be honest with you, I needed time to look at it. I don't know if that was not donated back to the city at some point in time in the future. But that is on a list of things to do. I, I forgot who asked me to compare two thousand and seven, that two thousand and seven bond versus the two thousand and eighteen bond. And I just simply have not had time to go through that two thousand and seven bond language to look at it.
Any additional questions from the?
I was just gonna try to briefly answer his question since, you know, we were a part of that. It was a collaborative effort, not only between the parish and the city, you know, to put up, they put up third, we put up two thirds, the state put up fifty million. So it was a total investment of a hundred million. The, it is run by a nonprofit which appoints board members from the police jury as well as the city council. So, and, and what I'm trying to do is compare this, this bond's already been issued. So the jury cannot be a part of this bond. So this is done. So your bond money would be put up, put up from strictly the city. If the parish chose to be a partner, then they would have to come with their outside money. So it would not be a part of this bond. Is that?
Yeah, that, that, that makes it very, muddies it a little bit, but I understand.
Whoever they get it from, we need it.
All right. Before we vote, any additional questions from the audience?
I have one other. Has the letter been sent to the police jury?
No.
It hasn't, because we're just doing it today. That's what they wanted, appropriation.
All right. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance requiring the submission of a monthly report to the city council of the city of Bossier City concerning changes in city employee compensation. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Darby and.
Why, why are we doing this?
Well, it's what I would, Mr. Smith, I would add, I mean, I'm not sure if we're gonna go the other route. This is somewhat of a duplication of report and, and information. We received the monthly financials. And you have the change in employment. You have your revenue figures and your expenses. I would, before we go down this road, I'd like to see how the outcome is. I mean, that would be my recommendation, if you wouldn't mind.
Postpone this for a couple of weeks?
Well, for a month at least.
Okay.
Till we get through the other part.
I'll second that.
All right. So we're continuing, fellas, for thirty days or whatever the closest to that is.
The other item failed, so it, it doesn't, the other item's not going forward. The repeal of the.
We had the.
Are you talking about to add the fire and police?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So we have a motion to continue for thirty days.
Hi.
About Mr. Montgomery, second by me.
Okay. Any public comment on that? All right. Public comment? Any additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for the Edward Bryan Memorial JAG Program Application. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt the resolution authorizing one fire department line employee to be replaced in mid-September due to an upcoming retirement on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience?
So this is just kinda confusing to me as I sat here and listened. I thought that y'all were just saying that the fire chief and police chief don't have to get permission to hire staff.
Here he comes.
Okay, tell me, Brad.
We don't right now. We just graduated eleven in July. We have a high turnover due to, we have a, we hired so many people in ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five. So they're all coming to retirement. It's just, it's kinda ebbs and flows. And we have a guy that's about to leave, so I don't need permission for the ten. I currently open position, but I'm asking their permission for this one because my class will start in mid-September and I will have one over my number. But I actually found out one was leaving in between this resolution and there. So I really won't be over, but y'all kinda get the point. I was just trying to ask permission for two months.
To exceed the budget.
Yep. I've been under the number all year, but this could put me over potentially by one. So that was it.
That's why I was just asking, cause y'all been talking about they don't have to have permission. Thank y'all.
Thank you for the question. Any other questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the removal of one auto mechanic, one position, and adjustment of salaries for fleet services personnel and hiring of one auto mechanic, two position due to a resignation in the fleet services department resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget.
Mr. President, I would like to continue this to the next meeting so we can get with Rodney and just talk to him.
I'll second.
Me and David will go over and talk to Rodney and anyone else I would like to.
All right. Have a motion to continue, item number fourteen. Is there questions from the audience?
Continue until when? Continue until when?
Uh, two weeks is fine.
Okay, the 29th.
Next meeting, yeah.
Okay, questions from the audience? Name and address, please.
West Marriott 4308 Parkway Drive. Uh, I find it very interesting that throughout the course of today's events and this specific agenda item, that we're willing to listen to the people that you get these recommendations from when it's convenient for you. When the mayor comes before you and says, I'd like to have the ability and the authority to manage my departments.
Specific to the agenda.
This is specific, Mr. President. If you allow me to, if you allow me to finish my, if you allow me to finish my statements, Mr. President.
To this item, specific to this item?
Yes, thank you.
Is there questions about this item?
I have public comment that I would like to address the council pursuant to Resolution 76 of 2021 that allows me to address the council on this specific agenda item. However, I can't fit it all into one sentence, so I would like to make a point that may extend into a paragraph.
Uh, Mr. President, call to order. Ms. Clerk, would you read our procedure?
Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president pro tempore, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by majority vote of the council.
May I reclaim my time to make my pertinent comments and bring the point together, Mr. President?
Two minutes, 21 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. The First Amendment does afford us the right to seek redress from our government when we feel they're not following the will of the people. Now, you've asked for the chief of police to give his opinion on, uh, why he needs the justice grant, which we all agreed on, and you voted the right way on that. You've asked the fire department, uh, the chief Zagone, why he needs to add this additional person. However, we ignore Mr. Mayor when he says he needs to, um, add people to certain departments or remove people. And now, we're stonewalling another attempt to just keep the proper personnel levels, whether it's a mechanic, whether it's a firefighter, allow the people that you've appointed and that the people of Bossier City have elected to do their job. So I would say, do not continue this. Vote to put the people in place so we can have the services that the city requires. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right, questions from the council? Comments? Cast your vote.
Motion carries to continue until August the 29th. Appoint Donald J. Willhite to the Cypress Black Bayou Recreation and Water Conservation District Board of Commissioners. This term is effective upon date of approval and will expire July 31st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience, this appointment? Questions from the council?
Uh, I just want to say, Mr. President, uh, is Mr. Willhite here?
Yes.
Uh, I hope you do a fantastic job, because I don't know if this is an appointment that everybody wants, but, uh, but, uh, I, I express this to the mayor privately, so I just wanted to express it to, to everyone publicly, that it's my desire moving forward with some of these appointments that we advertise. Uh, I think the police jury also had an appointment come up on this, and they had quite a pool of applicants. And so, um, uh, you know, and we have a lot of appointments that we, that we give out. So I, I think it would be, uh, a good idea if we, you know, reached out and maybe see if there's other people too that are interested. So, uh, but if Mr. Willhite wants to introduce himself, uh, I'm sure he's going to do a fantastic job out there. Just start with your name and the address, please.
Uh, Donald J. Willhite, 30, Pintel Lane, Bossier City, Louisiana. Uh, thank you for your questions. I, I, I look forward, I was asked to help out, which I'm, I've been retired, be two years come September. Been in business, been in business here for 40 years, so think I can help. If I can't help, I'd be glad to step out of the way. But I'll do my best, I promise you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions?
Hey, Mr. Willhite, they, they may need some help. We've got about 55 light poles that need to be put up on Highway 71. Okay.
All right, council. Cast your vote.
That's a state project, Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, I forgot, sorry.
Motion carries.
I need to abstain from that, please.
I'm sorry?
Stand for that.
Saying from that post?
Yep. So excited to get to the end of this meeting.
Motion still carries.
Yeah.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the Bossier City Council to request an opinion from the Louisiana Attorney General regarding the validity of the petition delivered on July 10th, 2023 by the Bossier Term Limits Coalition. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
All right, questions from the audience? Any additional questions from the council? Mayor?
Yes, uh, 200, 2,977 people signed a petition that they wanted to pay, where all the citizens can vote. I think the citizens need to vote. They voted us in. They need to vote to see if, uh, if we have term limits or not. Uh, just like Rodney Orr, he, he needs somebody in his, in his mechanic shop. Have any of y'all been down there for a week and worked with him or a month and see what kind of work they do, what, what kind of work they need to do? No, y'all not. He's there every day, and he needs somebody to help. And now y'all put, y'all put it on pause. So I think the people need to, you know, to vote on term limits. That, I mean, that might help me, let me do my damn job.
Rodney, would you mind coming to the mic, please? Not to drag you into this, okay? Is this a, is this a position that's been vacant?
Yes, sir, since December, two of them.
Per year?
Mm-hmm.
So, mayor, we're still waiting to hire somebody, so, okay? Thank you, Rodney.
No, wait a second. I mean, do you need, you need somebody, don't you, Rodney?
Yes, sir.
Hey, you need somebody, okay? And, and we're, we're getting more equipment by the day. Boss City's getting bigger, so we're going to need more people.
It's not against you. I'm just, we added this position last year's budget.
No.
Okay, but y'all postponing it now.
No, we haven't added anything. Uh, one guy left in December, one left three months ago.
I understand.
And I've been just trying to hire some back.
I know the story. Thank you. All right, any additional comments? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. That's all I have.
No reports?
Yes, sir.
Any announcements, mayor?
No, sir, I can't say what I want to say right now. Thank you.
Good. Any adjournments?